We have a quorum. I'm the chairman of the zoning commission, Daniel Bowland. To my right, we have Mr. Johnny Wicker, Mr. Victor Torano, to my left, Mr. Tyler Johnson, Mr. Tony Stanley, and Mr. Mike Metz. Mr. Mike, would you mind giving our invocation, please?
Yes, please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the safe travels you brought us all here tonight, and thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us, and little fall in the air, and thanks for the rain. Please give us all the wisdom here tonight to make the decisions that best for everyone in the county. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, our next order of business is approval of minutes from our July 18th meeting. Give commissioners a chance to look over those. Okay, do we have a motion?
A motion. Motion they approved.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. We do have a second. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Minutes are approved from the previous meeting. Moving on to new business, we do have case presentation, item A. That is MA 01-09-19-23, a rezoning request for two real estate parcels totaling 13.89 acres located at 529 Hollins Landing Road, Prosperity, South Carolina, to be rezoned from R2 Rural to RG General Residential, tax map number 590-15 and 590-49. Staff, can you give us a presentation?
Yes, the applicant is asking to rezone from R2 Rural, which is one acre minimum lot size, to RG, which is 10,000 square foot. Lot size for a proposed 30-lot subdivision. The applicant states to me that it would be for duplex housing. The comprehensive plan identifies this property to be within the future land use of lake development. Staff does not recommend this rezoning as this proposed subdivision would not fit into the characteristics of their surrounding community in that area. Yes, sir.
The lots around this are substantially larger than 10,000 square feet?
Yes, sir, they're all one acre or more. You have five acres, four acres, eight, 10, two, 28, I mean, it's, it's...
And 10,000 square feet's what, a little less than a quarter acre?
Roughly around a quarter, a quarter of an acre, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Do we have any other discussion, any questions to staff?
Duplex is two on each?
Be one, one, one structure, but two, two units.
So even, we're even further dividing those lots, basically?
Two families can live on 10,000 square foot, yes, one structure, two, essentially two families.
So it'd be 60 total. Well, I mean, I understand it's 30, but it'd be 60 dwellings.
Sixty families.
Sixty family, not dwel-, yeah, you gotta look at it, 30 structures, 60 families.
We have any other questions, discussion? For staff? Is the applicant here tonight?
The owner is here, but not the applicant, so just clear the air, the owner is here, but not applicant.
Okay.
He does, he does not have to speak if he doesn't wish to.
Would the owner like to speak on this?
Thank you. I just have a piece of land that...
Please state your name for us, sir.
Sorry, Lydane Owens.
Thank you, sir.
That's under contract if the zoning's approved, and the applicant applied for it, and that's all I know.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Owens? Thank you, sir. Is there anybody in opposition that would like to speak? Please come forward and state your name for us.
Everybody knows, excuse me, everybody knows me as Bonnie Fulmer. My name is Yvonne, but, you know, that's the way it goes. And I have 10 acres of land just above where this thing is supposedly gonna be. It's land that all the people who are living there right now has been in their, their families for 100 to 200 years. It's farmland. It is not meant to be another development. It's not on the lake, so there's no view. You're gonna have trees, which they may tear down some more, which you don't need in this area. There are coyotes living back behind the, in those areas. You have wildlife all over the place. Again, some of the people are still farming, not to the extent they used to when they were younger, or their parents were, but they're still farmland, and there's no amenities there, there's no view, it's landlocked. It just means that there's gonna be 60 possible more families who are gonna move in here and cause tons of traffic problems. It's a little two-lane road. There's not gonna be a heck of a lot of access, it's gonna, there's no amenities there, like gas stations, that kind of stuff. Like I said, there's no views, no nothing. The land is so many thousands of dollars, so they're gonna have to pay for that, plus the building. So what kind of people are gonna come in there and be seven to eight miles away from a town to just get gas? Or, and, and then they have traveling to work and so on and so forth, and be able to afford that. Most people who move up here are wanting to be closer to the lake. This is not close to the lake. And I think it is just, I think it's, it just makes me nauseated to think that there's gonna be that many more people possibly that would be in there. It need, it's for a couple of houses, maybe, but not for that type of, that, that many people. And it is affecting everybody. We're, a lot of us here are neighbors, some of the people here are from Plantation Point, and it's gonna affect our taxes, it's gonna affect everything that's gonna, in our, in our own community. And like I said, it's originally a farming community. I mean, Plantation Point went down there and went bankrupt. They were gonna put an Arnold Palmer golf course down there, and that didn't kind of come about, so it's not a wise place to put what they're talking about putting. And so that's about all I've got to say, but it's not, it's gonna be horrible for everybody around, plus the traffic that we don't have. I mean, we have a lot during the summer because of the boats, but that's about it, so...
Thank you, Ms. Fulmer.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Good afternoon, my name's Debbie Cromer, I reside at 559 Marina Way. I'm about two and a half miles from where I thought that until tonight was a tiny house. I have some current concerns, which were answered tonight, about the size of the lots and how it compares to other lots. And in the, in the tiny homes or the duplexes, are the landowners going to own the land, or are they gonna have to rent the land, like the tiny houses do, for like $650 a month to pay offset the cost of the rent and that kind of stuff? Will it have a management company to come in and say, you meet specs? Who's gonna put the infrastructure in for the houses? Are they gonna be family for duplexes, or they got boats and trailers where they will park? Will they rent them for accommodations, tax? Who is the developer? I know we struggle now with the repairs of our roads and the infrastructure. I know we did some major infrastructure repairs when they did the Stewart Landing, but will it accommodate what we, what we're thinking about here? I personally am not in favor of the development because we struggle now with the code enforcement. I see 10 years down the road that this will come the same thing as the trailer parts, if it's not managed correctly. And that's all I have to add, but I would like to say we have a large group of ones that are not in favor of this, if they would stand showing support against. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Cromer.
Good evening, I'm Robin Kruger, and I live on Marina Way as well. I guess my biggest questions are, some of what, what Ms. Cromer had said was, will these be homeowners, or are they gonna be renting? You know, and what's, what socioeconomic group are we gonna have coming in? What school are the kids gonna go to? I just think that's a lot of people in a little bit of an area, and I'm just not sure that those questions have been adequately answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Is there anybody else?
I had signed up, but I think there were some others as well. Is anybody else, too?
Yeah, please sign in if you want to speak.
My name is Maggie Beaton Ball, I live at 489 Hollins Landing Road. I am right next to where this is wanting to be developed. Not only am I talking as far as a homeowner next to this, but I used to be a member of four years of the Fairview Fire Department and Lake Murray Rescue Squad. This department is already servicing a large area with a large number of people. Adding in a larger infrastructure with more people is already gonna put more pressure on a volunteer-only fire department that is already struggling to recruit members, maintain members, as well as an aging fire department. Bringing in something like this is going to just add more unneeded pressure when we're already experiencing a hard time getting members out there and having a hard time getting a call volume in an adequate timeframe to responses. I can't tell you how hard it is being a first responder, especially on that curve, on that road, how many wrecks we've had to work right there. Bringing in more people is just gonna add in more traffic to that road and cause more wrecks right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beaton Ball.
Good evening, my name is Leon Fulmer. I appreciate y'all having this meeting tonight, for these folks to come and voice their opinion. And Mr. Metz, thank you for your invocation as well. I, I think, I think you see the kind of concern the citizens have for this kind of Personally, it, it is a prime example of the kind of intensive development that we don't need in the kind of rural area that this is located in. I, I know it's close to the lake, but it's certainly not lakefront property, and the property that surrounds it is certainly not consistent with the kind of intensive development that you're, you're gonna have on this, this particular, particular piece of property. And we've already heard from the zoning commission that they don't recommend it. I think that carries a tremendous amount of weight. Furthermore, you know, the, the old saying, something can be 100% legal and still be 100% wrong, all right? And I think that's the situation we've got here. But there's one thing that is never, ever wrong, and, and that's the voice of the people. And I appreciate Ms. Cromer asking everybody to stand so that you can get a feel for the kind of opposition that we've got for something like this in this area. I could stand here all night long and tell you the negatives of it, it's, it's already been pointed out. A huge strain on the area, a huge strain on the infrastructure that's not even existent in this, in this area. So I, I encourage you to pass on a recommendation to the county council not to approve this, 'cause I, this, this would be a huge detriment to a community that is single-family homes, folks that, that are retirement age, young people raising their families. This is certainly not the kind of intensive development that, that they wanna live close to. So I, I certainly encourage you to pass along that recommendation, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer.
Mr. Chairman, as far as I'm concerned, based on a recommendation of, of staff, the concerns of the adjacent neighborhood and citizens, and newly-elected council member, I, I would make a motion to deny the rezoning.
Okay. Mr. Owens, would you like a chance to, to speak, to respond?
All these are my neighbors, and I just wanna thank them for coming out. All I was doing was a business deal with, with Ben Staples as the developer, has done many before, and I personally don't wanna make enemies with any neighbors, and I recommend that y'all do what y'all feel is the best interest of the county, but I, I don't wanna hurt anybody. Thank you for giving me a chance.
Thank you, sir. We do have a motion to deny, do we have a second? We have a second, all in favor of denying the request, please signify by raising your hands and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, is unanimous. Request is denied. And just so everybody's aware, that recommendation will go on to county council, so we don't make the final decisions on things, just a recommendation. And, you know, that, we're gonna move on with other business, if, if you wanna stay, you can, if you were here just for that, you're welcome to leave, so, thank you for coming out. So thank you for coming out. Okay, we're going to move on to our next item, D. That is MA zero-two dash zero-nine dash one-nine dash two-three. A rezoning request for one real estate parcel totaling one acre located at two-six-zero-one Wilson Road, Newberry, South Carolina, to be rezoned from RG General Residential to R2 Rural, tax map three-three-nine dash one dash one-zero. Staff, can you give us your?
Yes, the applicant, who is also a member of the trustee that the property is owned by, is asking to rezone to R2 Rural from RG. There is currently an old vacant building on the property and the plan is to convert that existing building, no extra square footage, to a storage building. So to be able to do that, he would need to rezone to R2 Rural. R2 Rural is contiguous to the property. It, the future land use map identifies this, this area as in the economic development area, so staff does recommend this rezoning to R2 Rural. Yes, sir?
On the, the staff report, it says current land use, existing vacant building singular, but on the aerial maps, it seems to indicate there may be three structures on the property.
There's one existing mobile home.
Okay, the one elongated one. Then there was a little symbol way off to the, the right.
That was an old address for some, something previous. Maybe an old meter box or something, but it's no other structure.
Yeah, I couldn't tell. I thought it might be a mobile home.
Yeah, it's probably just an old hookup.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions for staff? Any other discussion?
Is this personal storage, commercial storage? It just says.
It'd be commercial if, if rezoned. And so, commercial storage is a, it's a conditional use as long as the structure is not over 3,000 square feet. The existing structure is not over 3,000 square feet. So it, conditional, the staff could approve it. If he was to add on to, add more square footage to that existing building and goes over the 3,000 square foot, then it would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception.
Any other discussion? Any other questions for staff?
And, and this is just because it cannot be commercial storage if it's currently?
RG, RG is, is just residential.
Okay. And that was the reason for R2?
That's exactly right. And it could have been rezoned to commercial, but there's no commercial contiguous and it's not over three acres. So it couldn't, if we, it would be considered spot zoning. So R2 is contiguous, so that's why we chose the R2 Rural.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to speak?
Sure.
Please say your name for us. Yeah, sign in. Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Ben Levrue. I am the property, property owner. The property is held in a trust. I'm the director of the trust as lo, as well as the beneficiary. At the end of the day, we're just trying to identify the best use case for this property. It is currently a 2,500 square foot abandoned warehouse, basically. From what I understand, at one point, it was a auto body shop turned into a, a bar for many years, which is really interesting. But as a property owner, we're just trying to figure out what is the best use case, right? So upon speaking with Ms. Katie, we identified that like a storage type of facility could be a good use, but we're not really like stuck in one type of option. We're just trying to figure out what steps we need to take in order to get the proper zoning out of residential into some type of a commercial lease opportunity.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Levrue?
I assume y'all had to do renovations before it would be suitable for being storage?
Yes, sir. There would be minor upfitting. Going into the building, it really just is a wide open space. It almost feels like a skating rink, right? It's got an old slab that looks rock solid. Really, the only need that I see for renovations is the bathroom area, which is the only piece of the structure that was added after the fact. It's got a little roof that caved in, right? But very small square footage in that area that we placed a new roof on it. But as far as just the main structure and what would be used as potential storage, I don't really see the need for any renovations, just a big, big warehouse.
So you're looking for like a warehouse and not miniature storage units?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah. The current zoning, we could try to put up some walls and use it as like multi-family housing, but it just, based on the type of structure, it doesn't make sense.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Levrue? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this? Okay, do we have a motion to approve or deny?
I make motion to approve.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second? We have a second to approve the request? All in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to the next item. Item C, approval of the sketch plat for the Orchard at Water, at Edgewater Shore subdivision pursuant to subdivision regulations. Staff, please give us your presentation.
So this is the sketch plat for Orchard at Edgewater Shores. It has gone through the review process through all of the members that need to review it, such as Newbury Electric Co-op, Newbury County Water and Sewer, Stormwater, FEMA. All of, all of the agencies have approved it. Staff has approved it. WK Dixon, who is our consulting engineer, has also approved this. And this is in addition to the current Edgewater Shores.
That's, that's my fault.
Yep. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions for?
There's no division line between twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven, twenty-eight at the, uh?
The upper right, or just straight up?
Um, that's, it's just the, when I minimized it, it, it's a division line.
Okay.
What did she say?
There is a division line.
Yeah. This is a, it was a big file.
Yeah, in other words, there should be division lines between. Any other questions for Ms. Katie? Do we have any discussion?
One question I got, Kate. This is in what zoning is it?
RS, single-family residential. Twenty thousand square foot.
Twenty thousand, that's one thought. I make the motion to approve.
We do have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We do have a second to approve. All in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands.
Aye.
So moved. Motion passes. Our next item of business is our amendments to the current Joint Planning Commission rules and procedures.
Do you want to table it? Do we have?
I say we table that to our next meeting. Hopefully, we'll have more commissioners present at that meeting. I think that'll be a better reflection of what we need to update. So we're going to table item D until next scheduled meeting. Next item of business, item E, economic development and priority investment of the comprehensive plan.
Just so they have time to look at it, can I ask a question about something?
Sure, sure. Absolutely.
The third page says section one zoning amendments. It's short, I'll read it. Reprovision and text district amendments shall be considered and recommendations shall be forwarded to the governing body. I assume that's county council. Within 30 days after we ceded proposed amendments, unless additional time is given by the government, governing body. I'm wondering what, should, do we need a comment about if there, if we don't have a quorum at a meeting, it would extend more than 30 days?
So what that means is once you all make your recommendation, I have to get it to first reading within 30 days.
Yes, I didn't understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carry on with item D.
Okay. Mr. Victor went ahead and submitted a few typo correctional changes for economic and priority investment that you all have in front of you. He provided this last month when we didn't have a quorum. So Ms. Cheryl has already made these changes. I just didn't reprint the elements for you all. So these are, these have been made in the, in the elements. So we're going to talk about the economic and priority investment tonight. Next month, we will go over land use and make the recommendation to approve the entire comprehensive plan next month. So we got one more meeting and you all will be done with the comprehensive plan. So for the economic development, what is the economic element? It provides an assessment of the components of the economy in the Newbury County, its municipalities, and the surrounding region. Provides a platform for local officials to identify the types of employment desired and the general location where such opportunities should be directed. Ensures distribution of economic benefits to residents throughout our county and examines the role of the county and its municipalities within the context of the state and our regional economy. This is our 10 largest taxpayers. So we have Kraft, Dominion, Newbury Electric, Kisswire, Duke, Georgia Pacific, West Fraser, Samsung, AT&amp;T, and our Pioneer Foods. For our existing industrial and commercial land use, we have about 3% vacant, 0.8% commercial, 0.3 industrial. And of course, all of that comes up to 100%.
Okay. How was that modified so that the 100% makes sense? That was one of the comments we get.
So the total of all the uses without, I believe that would be out throughout the whole county. So this is just industrial, commercial, and vacant land out of the whole county.
This is just land that's previously zoned for this purpose.
Yep. Is that, clarify that? Our economic base, new industrial, industrial employers brought in 1,399 jobs and more than 500 million in new capital investment to the county between 2013 and 2022. 356 jobs were added and 157, 157 million in additional investments were made by existing employers over the decade. The largest economic impact was by Samsung in 2017 with capital investment of 380 million and 950 new jobs. This is our, our major employers. Kraft, of course, is our leading. And then Newbury County comes in at 10 with 180 employed. And in fact, it's a little bit higher than that now. I need to get that correction to, to Cheryl. Wages, the highest average private sector annual wage in Newbury County are generated by the wholesale trade, 72,592, and manufacturing coming in at 57,720. The average accommodation and food service sector job in Newbury County is roughly paying 17,992, and it offers only 31% of our average weekly wage of a manufacturing sector job. This is kind of a graph of our earnings and unemployment by education. Our commuters, more than 5,345 workers from Newbury County commute to jobs outside the county and more than 4,800 workers from surrounding counties travel to Newbury to their employer. And the county population decreases by 2.4 or 925 persons during the daytime to, to an overflow of workers to neighboring communities. That's higher than the statewide average at only 1%. And the county has 10 available industrial sites totaling 1,300 acres, three RSC certified. The county is marketing one industrial building. It's currently leased by Samsung and five retail office residential buildings. Additional infill and reuse opportunities are in the downtown Newbury, in the commercial corridors, along Wilson Road and Sea Arkun. The county seeks to build a vibrant and diversified economy by focusing on industry targets in the automotive, materials, transportation, logistics, food, beverage, and our agricultural sectors. So some things to consider. Is the labor force adequate in size and training to meet our economic development goals and our employer needs? Does the county have adequate available land and facilities to meet the demand and, and, and enable residents to live and work within our, our county? Will our infrastructure, including our utilities and roads, support our economic growth? Where and what types of infrastructure are needed? And how can the county protect current and future commercial, agricultural, and industrial land uses while also protecting neighboring residential and other land uses? Did anybody have any suggestions for goals for this element?
I'd be remiss, and I'm sure Tyler will agree with me. Agriculture still coats a big burden in it. I mean, just timber alone. Timber, $15 million is paid to landowners for their timber in Newbury County every year. And $30 million is delivered to the mills in this county. That's a, that's just timber and that's not counting all the poultry and all the other part. But agriculture still is a, a big component of, of our economy here.
And that was one thing I also wanted to bring up. It wasn't a part of the, the new land use map and stuff. I think we've really got to focus on saving our agricultural land. Because even when you go back and look at the industries that are already here, Kraft, West Fraser, George Pacific, Place East Say, those companies are agricultural based. So once we infringe upon their land and stuff that they're using for farming, timber, and crops and stuff, then we're being detrimental to those industries while trying to bring in outside industries. So I think that's something we really need to be conscious of when we're drawing our maps and when we're approving these zoning appeals and stuff going forward.
All right. Do we have a motion to recommend to county council the economic development element?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We do have a second. All in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All right.
Unanimous, so moved.
So for priority investment, it encourages planning for long-term major capital improvement needs and our financing provides direction for implementing recommended capital improvements strategies and other elements of the comprehensive plan. And it encourages stronger intergovernmental planning and coordination. So requires coordination with adjacent jurisdictions and agencies. So it could be adjacent counties, municipalities within the county, our public service districts, school district, public and private utilities, transportation agencies, and other affected public entities. The county capital investment priorities is to provide, maintain, and make improvements to public facilities to accommodate the needs of residents and businesses, update and improve services, and meet local, federal, and state requirements. Expansion of water and sewer service to existing residences and to future residential, commercial, and industrial development and construction of a new county public safety complex. And it's an expansion and improvement of the detention center. Expansion and improvement and maintenance of our transportation facilities and service to meet the needs of our county residents. Promotion of economic development to create jobs, increase sustainability, and strengthen the local tax base. Expansion, improvement, and maintenance of, okay, she's got that in there twice. Expansion, improvement, and maintenance of, okay, she's got that in there twice. Expansion, improvement, and maintenance of emergency services and facilities to increase public safety. The two thousand twenty-two CPSD Master Plan and Sales Tax Commission identified and voted, voters approved twelve projects to be funded by the one percent sales tax. The bonds will be issued for thirty-five point two-five million to provide primary funding for the projects. The remaining amount will be funded through the interest on bond revenues and taxes along with funds remaining from previous projects. So the approved projects is the Newbury County Public Safety Complex, improvement to the city's recreation complex, improvements to Prosperity's Parks, new cell block building and facility upgrades to our detention center, improvements to Little Mountain Reunion Park, a downtown Newbury amphitheater and pavilion support building, upgrade and expansion of Newbury County Water and Sewer Cannons Creek Waste Treatment Plant, renovation of Old Goman High School as a community center, IT network security improvements at our courthouse, replacement in HVAC, improvements at the Newbury Museum, improvements to the Newbury, to the town of Pemaria's old Pemaria School Community Center, and improvements to Town of Whitmire City's gym. Some things to consider, budgets continue to be tight at public and private levels. Limited funding is available from federal, state, and private sources. We must maximize our resources, create partnerships, and seek innovative ways to meet capital improvement needs. Do we have any goals that you would like to see?
I had one thing in our draft, page ten. The first part of, in table ten-five, South Carolina Highway thirty-four, South Carolina Highway twenty-nine. Is that a misprint?
Yep.
All right. And...
Table, that was ten point, where was that at again?
Page ten, ten dash eight.
Okay. Page ten dash eight.
And... And I was also wanting to know if we could, I don't know how hard it would be to add to this, but I think if we could get the information on where our wastewater treatment plants and water supplies, where they are at currently percentage-wise to what they could be. I guess probably the best way is the percentage used compared to, of production. I just think that if we had, I mean, if we had that information going forward, it'd make it easier when looking over that section.
Okay, I can try to get the Water and Sewer Authority to respond and provide that. They have reviewed the element, so I will, I will ask if they can get that. Do you want to hold off on recommending this to council? Or do you want to recommend it with the hopes that I can get it added?
Recommend with the hopes to, hopefully.
Okay.
I feel like it's a good section, but if we had that information to add in there, it would strengthen it.
I'll get with Brent in the morning.
Problem, problem, that's a good idea. Problem is the Water and Sewer Authority is not a county. They don't belong to the county. They're on their own element. That's what makes it, you know, county council can't direct them on what to do because I'm on Farm Bureau Land Use Advisory Committee for the state. And one of the things we're trying to do that helps protect agricultural land is have extensions of the sewer systems away from the cities and bring the, like the subdivision we were just talking about, could be hooked in the city and closer to the town that, but the county has no authority over the Water and Sewer Authority. So it's not a county thing.
I was just questioning where they are at current production, percentage-wise being used of that current production. That would give us an idea of really how much we can develop based off of those utilities.
Good consideration. Any other questions?
Yep, any other thoughts, concerns?
Do we have a motion to approve the priority investment part of the comprehensive plan? We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 So moved, motion passes. And that brings us to item five. Discussion and informal items. Do we have any updates from county council?
We do not.
Okay, no current updates. Moves us on to B, next regular meeting to be held October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, at five-thirty PM. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.